So good to go then?
Yep, we're good.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. The time is now 3:33. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press at Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member on City Council, posted on the City website, and City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible of audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting as unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade is joining for closed session. Councilmember Meyer is absent. Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz is joining for closed session. City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
We have one resolution, 288-10-2025, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-12. This is to discuss the UAW Local 2327 Lieutenant Lifeguards' collective bargaining negotiations, the Promenade Preservation Project, Cheyenne Construction, Inc., and the proposed easement agreements with the County of Cape May for revetment? Yeah?
Yes.
Along Delaware Avenue and professional services and the lead service line replacement program. If we have a motion to adopt.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
All right, public portion mayor?
Is anyone here wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and go into closed session. Time is 3:34.
3:34.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. We have a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. The time is now three past 5:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
You have to close session.
Oh, let's do that and we'll close it.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And to start the meeting, I'm already out of order. We need to close the closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. And there is anticipated action being taken during the regular meeting.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll open up the regular City Council meeting. City Clerk, do you want to give us the announcements?
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and the copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of council, posted on the city website and city hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer is absent. Mayor Mullick?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillenshaw?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Rags?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
And council, I believe we have a few additions this evening, if you'd like me to go through those.
Please.
All right. We have Resolution 298-10, 2025, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Cape May and UAW Local 2327, Cape May Lieutenant Life Guards, and authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering the period January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2026. We also have Resolution 299-10, 2025, resolution authorizing a contract with de Blasio and Associates Engineers for planning and design services for the lead service line replacement program to be added to the agenda, council.
Do I have a motion to add those resolutions?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay. Anything to remove tonight, council? Okay.
I think that's it. Go right into our Employee of the Month. City Manager, want to take it away?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Mike Grande to come up from the Department of Public Works. That way he can stand up here while we talk about him and he can feel awkward and everything like that that goes along with being garnered the Employee of the Month. So Michael's been employed with Cape May since 2015. He started actually as a recreation aide in that part of the city, but during COVID when we kind of moved away from recreational programs and just, you know, Mike was able to stay on with the city and, you know, was able to move over to Public Works as a laborer. And that's really where his, you know, his skills just really shown over at Public Works and was really, in 2023, was able to be promoted as Public Works Repairer. So it just kind of kept moving him forward. He takes pride in his work and he's always out fixing things and just keeping things moving up, whether it's the ADA mats or the gas lamps around the city, kind of anything that Eric or the teams asked Mike to do, he kind of says yes and figures out a way and just is a good team player within the Public Works. In his off time, you know, he just really enjoys hanging out with his dog Ziggy and riding his motorcycle, though I guess we need a clarification. What type of motorcycle is it?
Well, it's a Honda, it's basically like a Honda Grom. It's like a knockoff brand of a Honda Grom. It's like a mini bike, but it's still a motorcycle.
There you go.
It's something to save gas on going back and forth to work.
So, so enjoys doing that. So if you see him out there, make sure that you don't run him over and stuff like that. So, there you go. So I just want to say congratulations, Mike, for everything you do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You have to have your usual picture.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You have to have your usual picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, on to updates and old business. City Manager?
Hi. First thing I wanted to update the council is, we did get the, we did that beach safety study. We've kind of, it was done a couple months ago before the summer, but we didn't really want to present it and finalize it here because we're waiting to kind of, one of the aspects that they were proposing for the next step, we kind of wanted to follow up and have that proposal to kind of suggest to move that forward. You know, they did a very good analysis and historic look at all of our beach fills, trends of how the beach profile is moving about and looked at everything. And then they came up with a couple recommendations. And I think really one of the primary things to focus on is, I think we all, you know, with, we know our beach fill template needs to have some work done on it. And in order to change that beach template, we need to have an engineering study. But before just running out and just letting the consultant just go at it and make an engineering study, in order to make it productive, we really need to work with our partners, with the Army Corps and the DEP Bureau Coastal Engineering, to find out what do they need to be shown and what efforts do we need to do to show that, hey, maybe we can come up with another beach template profile that still meets the Army Corps' need of providing beach protection, but also has a beach that is more user-friendly, a little gentler slope for people and family-friendly to use in a larger stretch of our beach. So that's what Taylor has come back with us as a proposal to take a look at that. And now that we've had this presentation, I'll sit there and put the full beach report on the city's website so everybody can kind of take a look at it. But if you have any questions about the full report, I'll be happy to meet with you individually or, you know, and answer any of the questions. But I think they did do a good job at kind of culling through all the data, you know, not only the Army Corps reports, but also integrating some of our Stockton Beach reports and kind of doing a really good deep dive on everything that is our beach. And I think, I think they have some thoughts on what they would recommend and what to do and how to model a change, but we really have to have that discussion with our DEP partners in order to accomplish that. And I think their, I mean, their price was not too exorbitant. They're asking and proposing for $12,000 to kind of move forward for a second phase, to have that interaction meetings with our partners. And that would allow them to formulate a larger proposal on what the engineering effort would be to model our beach, to come up with a better template for us. So that's kind of what my recommendation would be. They had several other recommendations in the beach report, but I think ultimately, that's really the focus of what the city should do to move forward.
That's out of draft form at this point from Acton Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because there were a few public members that were asking for it. And it'll go back on the website.
It'll go up on the, I'll get this as a final draft and then we'll put this as a final report. Yeah, this report was shared with the Beach and Safety Committee meeting. Acton Taylor did make a presentation at the Beach and Safety Committee meeting. So if anybody from the public really wanted to look at that, when I do the, put it up on the city's website, I'll put a link directly to the Beach and Safety Committee meeting YouTube video. So that way, if anybody wants to go back in and check out that presentation, they can look at that directly from there.
Yeah. We were, we were pretty much very pleased with the report that we received.
Oh, good.
Very, you know, historically, back to the 90s.
The next thing, just to give the council and the public a brief update, our construction projects are moving along fairly well and on target. The biggest one I wanted to highlight, we're anticipating having a pre-construction meeting next week for the police headquarters building. Once we have that pre-construction meeting, we'll be able to make an announcement of when we're going to have our groundbreaking, some preliminary discussions with the contractor. They anticipate after the pre-construction meeting, starting within three to four weeks. So they're looking to get right in there and start working. So we're looking forward to that groundbreaking. So I'll keep the council and the public informed to when that date will be. That's all I had this evening. Thank you.
That's great. City Solicitor?
Just to update council, maybe more so for the public, but the workforce housing ordinance that's been going through the process of review was at the planning board. There were some comments made and an adoption or a recommendation that it was consistent with the master plan with some related comments. I have a updated draft of that, which I think is going to be ready for council consideration at an upcoming meeting. But just wanted to update you all and the public on the status of that.
Thank you. Okay. City Council, any updates or old business? Okay. I just want to bring up one thing, actually. On the agenda tonight, we're hiring a new CFO. And that person is with us this evening, and I'll get into that in just a little bit in the agenda. But I really want to thank Kevin Haney for his dedication to the City of Cape May over the last two years. He's really been a wonderful asset for the city, often kind of working behind the scenes. You know, people don't get to see all the hard work that gets done. But Kevin has just been a wonderful person to work with, Temple Box Business grad and a CPA, really, just a really nice person, kind of moving on in a different direction for himself, but is leaving the city in really good financial hands and is also willing to stay on for a couple of months in this transitional phase to a new CFO. So we can't thank him enough for his dedication to the city and his willingness to make sure that the ship is heading in the right direction as he goes out the door. So we really appreciate that. With that, we will open it up to ordinances for introduction.
Yes, we have 580-2025, an ordinance to update the uniform salary and classification plan for the Department of Personnel Positions in the City of Cape May. Do we have a motion to introduce?
Do I have a motion to introduce 580?
I'll introduce.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions?
If I could have a-
Sure, please.
Just to make a quick comment regarding this, there's about approximately 151 titles in the salary ordinance. And we're kind of, we did a mass update because we had about six or seven contracts and collective bargaining agreements that all have been ratified over this past year. So the lion's share, so out of the, there's 14% of the titles in there that are not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. The maximum salaries were all adjusted for the duration of their collective bargaining contract, so that we don't have to revisit any of the titles that are in the collective bargaining agreement as part of that. And the salary ordinance is really just a salary guide, not, it's not what the individual employees make. We set that at the time of our budget. And, you know, that's how the salaries are set. But I just wanted to let the council know and the public know that there's 21 titles that are outside of that, that are outside of those collective bargaining agreements that we'll deal with, as well as we are still negotiating two collective bargaining agreements, the PBA and middle management. So obviously, we haven't updated those salaries because they're still in negotiation. Thank you.
So Mr. Dietrich, I'm glad you clarified some of that information. And one of the things that you and I had discussed is salary ranges are really what the market bears. It's really what you get from the market. And as you've indicated, you know, an individual salary could fall anywhere in that range. And I think that the other thing that you've shared, I think, with all of us on council is that none of, no one gets a salary increase without council and the mayor reviewing that and as part of the budget process. So I think those are two points of clarification that are necessary, both for us as well as for the public.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a quick comment. And I've spoken to the manager, Manager Dietrich and Mr. Riggs as well. Just because this is being introduced, I would love to see a red line version. And they're going to, they're going to bring that up to us or back to us at that point. So.
You'll have that later this week.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else, council? Okay, roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption, 577-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 199 of the city code regarding the certificate of zoning compliance to include information regarding the applicability of the local historic district. And there is a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 577? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on this one, council? Of course, came from HPC.
Just briefly, Mayor. I mean, I think it's a, this is a logical measure, I think, as far as having this certificate. I mean, what it does is it provides property owners of notice. And we want people to be aware, particularly when they purchase a property in the historic district. One, we all know, and I think we all accept that there's a responsibility, those that own a property in the historic district. Some people consider it a burden. But at least you should, you need to know going in as far as whether your home is a key property, contributing property, or non-contributing property. And by way of this notice, it assures that the city is providing some soft guidance for property owners and who purchase properties, that they may need to work with the HPC if they want to do some external work on their property. I think what's significant as well, though, is for those that have looked at this, they should know, it's just a notice provision. It doesn't change what the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance or the land use ordinance does right now, but it just provides information to property owners of, that they may have some additional responsibilities, that there may be certain steps that they need to take if they purchase a property. So I think it's a, it's a really, I think it was, I appreciate the fact that the HPC brought this to the forefront and brought this before, for our attention. I think it's a, it's a really good ordinance for us to be, to be passing.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Bodnar. Any other comments, council? Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
578-2025, an ordinance amending city code to include a prohibition on demolition by neglect with a public hearing, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 578? 578, please. If you would, just come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. My name is Sharon Wendell. I'm a resident at 506 Broad Street. And I'm here in support of the ordinance that will not, for no demolition by neglect, passing some photographs of 505 Broad Street, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with that property. It is, we, myself and the neighbors would really like to see that property not be, you know, not be taken down, obviously, for historic reasons and preserved. It has not been inhabited for quite some time, overgrowth of the property, et cetera. So anyway, we are in support of that ordinance to amend that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on 570, excuse me, 578? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? I just, again, thank HPC for bringing this forward. I think it's another obvious regulation that is important in protecting our historic structures. You know, we just heard from a member of the public who is concerned about one of those structures. And we don't want to see these beautiful old buildings demolished by neglect. So I think it's an obvious one. Any other questions or councils? Any other questions or comments, council? Okay, roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
579-2025, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water treatment system by and in the City of Cape May, County of Cape May, State of New Jersey, appropriating $350,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $350,000 of bond or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof with a public hearing.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 579? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on ordinance 579. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments, council? Our city manager gave us a review of this at the last meeting. So, thank you. Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the public portion on the resolutions only, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have, anyone, pardon me. Do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak on resolutions this evening? Anyone on resolutions this evening?
Stacy Sheen, 928 Columbia Avenue. My question, first question, has to do with the addition of the de Blasio contract. Can we say what, was that for and the cost?
That won't be in the consent agenda, obviously, but it is a resolution. So we're happy to go over it. City Manager, do you want to go into detail on that?
Sure. This is for the lead service line replacement program. They submitted a proposal. This proposal is covered entirely by a grant, and the resolution stipulates that no funds will be expended by the city until the city receives the grant for their services that they're going to work on. But it'll cover them identifying all of our unidentified lead service lines, working on plans and specifications to apply for additional principal forgiveness funding from the DEP to have a program to help replace those lead service lines for residents.
And what is the cost that they're charging for?
$825,000.
Because I know we had, last week, it was Remington Vernick at over $900,000. And, but in Remington Vernick's contract, it talked about, they were doing a lot of just going through our records. Are they just going to go through records? Or are they actually going to go to the house? Because it comes out to be about $250,000 a household to look at each.
Yeah. Both proposals had processes to both review records and do onsite inspections. The de Blasio's proposal included a different type of a procedure. Well, they'll, they'll actually, for the ones that we don't have identified, they will visit the house and they insert a probe through the water meter that does an electromatic analysis of the pipe and kind of like through orthocopic surgery would do. They send a probe through the pipe to identify what type of pipe it is. And that better helps them identify for contractual process on the construction side of which ones need to be replaced or not.
Because I noticed in Remington Vernick's, the resolution he had last week, it required the homeowner to be home. Is this going to require the homeowner to be home?
They'll have probably different various stages. It's going to depend on where the water meter is located at. And obviously, if we, you know, if we have to go onto a property owner's property, especially if the water meter, because there are some properties that have the water meter inside the house in the crawl space or in a basement, yeah, we will need access.
Why I'm saying that is because we're getting to winter time with a lot of people are leaving. And it would be nice for them to be notified ahead of time so they can give the city the okay before it gets winter time and we can't locate the people.
Well, I mean, that'll be part of their process. This is not a process, we're looking to have this all done by January. This process will probably run into the spring.
Okay. Because why, when I read the proposal last week, it was they would only contact the neighbor, the homeowner twice, and that would be it. And I just want to make sure the more we tell people this is coming around, the better prepared they will be to let them in.
That's why there is an entire whole public outreach program, including mailings, website notifications, and various outreach methods.
And certainly, they could, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
They could certainly prioritize those homes that they know where the meters are at the street, which is a number of properties in Village Green. So, you know, there's an ability to prioritize certain sections of the city in the winter months without, with proper notification, of course, as well as, you know, taking the time to roll through it accordingly. So.
I think it's a great program. I'm just making sure everybody gets aware that's going on.
Stacy, do you mind if I interrupt you for just a second, just because we're talking about it? Sure. We will get a presentation on this in the future as part of that public outreach. But just while we're talking about it, to let people know what we're talking about is, we are looking at a $2 million grant. And out of that grant will come some of the proceeds of this study, basically. But it is really interesting. It's a state-of-the-art where they actually, it will insert, I don't know if it's actually, it's not a camera, right?
No, it's a probe.
It's a probe. That can tell the presence of different materials like lead or plastic or galvanized. And so this will go actually, not just where the city meter stops, but into people's properties so that people can see, okay, yes, you may have galvanized pipe and you may really want to look at that, or you have a lead pipe that's being shown on, so it's, it's a really valuable process that everyone will receive. And, but as you said, Stacy, public outreach on this is going to be key, so I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. It's, I think it should be noted what's, what it's about. My next question has to do with Resolution 293, the appointment of Lauren Reed. It said four years, but the dates don't correspond to four years. So I was just.
That's a statutory thing. The appointment is, relates back to January 1st of the year of the appointment. That's the way the statute reads. That's why you're, you're thinking like, why isn't it four years from today?
No, it has January 25th to December 23rd, which is only three years. And that was my question. Right?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that's four years.
Okay, I was thinking it was January, or I was counting January. Thank you.
Yep.
It's correct. Thank you for your clarification. My next question has to do with Resolution 292 for the temporary container and special event for the Chalfont Hotel. I noticed that the application was in it, and the application kind of reads differently than the resolution, so I'm assuming the resolution supersedes the application. Are they backdating certain dates, or is just the dates that are in the resolution?
I can speak on that if Council wants. The application was submitted earlier in the season, and it took significant review. Internally, the applicant ended up amending their request, so, you know, some significant time had passed, so that's, the application might have mentioned certain dates, but we're only, well, Council, if you authorize it tonight, would only be authorizing the, what's in the resolution, basically.
Okay, because I think the one said there's drinking in the street, there's no drinking in the street.
So, I'm under the impression that this is going to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed upon separately, and we could probably cover some of that information at that time, if you're comfortable maybe talking about it at that time.
Okay, well, that's one of my questions. My other question, also has to do, is there a reason why this isn't going before the planning or zoning board?
This, for the special?
Only because it affects neighbors, and that's where I, you know, it's a change of use to a point.
It is only, they went through the route of a special event application, the same as we do for Oktoberfest every year. Council considers allowing open consumption of alcohol for the Oktoberfest event. It's a similar, where this is only a weekly event for a small period of time, not completely changing the use, you know, permanently. So that's why they went the special event route, and it doesn't have to go before the boards.
Okay. So it doesn't, that's why it doesn't have to go before the planning or zoning board?
It's nothing permanent. It's, I can go into more detail. I don't know if you want to wait until it's.
Just so if I can come back and.
You can.
Okay, thank you.
You can, Stacy. Thank you.
Anyone else on resolutions this evening?
Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. Since you're going to bring it up under the consent, my question is relevant to 292, but it goes, I don't really have any feelings as far as the current operation, but my big concern is, you know, what kind of precedent are we setting by just adopting a program to allow someone to have an outside event without any approvals?
Mr. Roush, I'm going to ask if you could just allow us to pass through the rest of the resolutions?
Okay, that's fine.
And you can come back up and ask the questions. I think it just would be better suited for the flow of the meeting, if you wouldn't mind?
No, come on, go.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else on resolutions this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment on the consent agenda.
So, Council, would you like to remove anything from the consent agenda, please?
Trying to get to that, basically, yeah.
By all means.
292?
You got it.
And 297?
Sure.
And actually, 293 as well.
Yep, I'm sorry, 293. All right.
Oh, yes. Any, all right, so Dylan, do we have any motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, other than those excluded?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Can I bring forward Resolution 293 first, please?
Sure, sure. So we have 293-10-2025, a resolution appointing chief financial officer for the city of Cape May.
I just want to welcome Lauren Reed, who actually is not the first time to be in City Hall. Lauren was very helpful to us in a earlier transition just recently. Why don't you give a nice wave? Lauren has basically close to 30 years' worth of CFO experience. I actually was reminding myself, you went to College of Charleston, which is, which is pretty neat, and obviously has been a longtime CFO to one of our neighbors in lower township. And we're just so thrilled to have you, and came with such high recommendation from our auditor, which, you know, when you get a recommendation from your auditor, you know, that's, that's going to be a strong one, because we know he's tough. So we just really welcome you and thank you so much for your, your willingness to serve the city of Cape May. Thank you, Lauren.
Welcome.
Okay, we got to officially vote to welcome her, and so.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes, welcome, Lauren. Thank you, thank you. Could we go to 297? Is that was bold, I believe, right?
297-10-2025, a resolution amending council meeting times for the remainder of 2025.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to amend this resolution so that it indicates when closed sessions will occur, now that we're changing the meeting start time. I'd like the language to read that if and when we are required to have a closed session, those meetings will be held immediately prior to the 5:30 start time. So, Mr. Gillen, Shortz, is that something that we could do here at the table?
I would frame it just like that.
Yep, yeah, okay, perfect.
So, do you want to make a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Do I have a second to the amendment?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the amendment? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adopt as amended?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And just a quick, quick explanation, we are happy for Councilman Meyer, who took on a new position. Unfortunately, that position is not allowing him to be here at 5:00 PM, so that's going to, we're, in this resolution, we push it back to 5:30 to accommodate that new role. Anything else, Council? Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Would you like to go through the rest of the regular agenda before 293? Or do you want to come back for that? I'm sorry, 292?
Yeah, please.
The added ones?
Yep, thank you, I'm sorry.
Yep, no worries. We have 298-10-2025, the resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Cape May and the UAW, Local 2327 Cape May Lieutenant Life Guards, and authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2026.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council? I think I'll say on behalf of the entire Council, we really thank our lifeguards for their service this season. They actually just finished this week putting away everything and getting ready, but it's really nice, especially for the locals, to make sure that we have some protected beaches, you know, during what many of us call local summer. So I really thank them for their service, and I also want to thank Sarah Warner, who is moving on, a lieutenant, that gave 22 years of service to the city. Don't want to get too far beyond this resolution, but I want to thank all of our lifeguards for their service this season, as, and as they've done for every season, a wonderful job, so thank you. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 299-10-2025, a resolution authorizing a contract with de Blasio and Associates Engineers for planning and design services for the lead service line replacement program.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council? We didn't have any public comment on this one, right?
It's a resolution.
On the.
Any public discussion on the, no.
On the, on this, okay, thank you.
Any additional?
Yes, yeah, okay. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And so we're back to 292-10-2025, resolution regarding temporary open container and public consumption in connection with a permitted special event.
I'm going to recuse myself on this resolution.
Thank you.
Even though I will say I have no financial gain from this, unfortunately, but thank you.
We'll come get you. I'll make a motion.
Make a motion. I'll second.
Yes, so we'll open it back up for public comment on Resolution 292.
There were some questions on 292. If you'd like to come up and ask them at this point, we can go ahead and answer those to the best of our ability, and we also do have the applicant present with their representative, so if there are particular questions, we can also, if you're comfortable, invite them to make some comments.
Well, I'm going to comment a little bit, just on what has been shared with me by the city clerk. One, they filed an application, I think that they went through the process that exists by ordinance in the city, so for a special event, which this was classified under, there was an internal review that the city manager participated in, as well as the clerk, along with the police chief and the fire chief. That's okay. To make sure that the conditions were appropriate, which was, you know, why you saw some of the changes from the dates from what was originally filed to being in front of us now. The other piece of this is something that I always hear when we question, does this set a precedent, Mr. Roush, is nothing sets a precedent. That's sort of the legal term that comes back to us. You take every case on its merit, you review, and most of this review was not done by this, the individuals at this table. This was done by the professionals, and the professionals are, you know, the city manager, the clerk, looking at, you know, sort of the permanent process for this, the police chief and the fire chief, looking at the conditions. I'm sure that there were discussions with the neighbors, I can't speak to that, I will allow the business representatives to do that, but I think that when we feel that we're sending, we're setting a precedent, my understanding, and certainly in this case, I feel confident that they went through the due diligence, and it doesn't necessarily support or negate someone from coming forth at some point in time, and those conditions that are put before that body and then presented to us would have to be appropriate. So I don't, from my perspective, and the way I'm looking at this, the way I reviewed it and the information that was shared with me, I don't think that I'm necessarily setting a precedent. These conditions were reviewed by the professionals and put before us to ask us to consider this application. And I have to trust in their judgment, because that is what they do, and that is what their job is.
This is a limited special permit, so it's, it's not, you know, an open-ended special permit, it's limited to only the dates that are specific on here, which ends, I think, at the end of November.
We're almost at the end of October. There's only a few left. I, the applicant, should they want to continue this next season, would have to reapply via special permit, special event application, and we would go through the same procedure with it coming before council if they wanted to allow the portability and mobility of alcohol within the expanded event area. So even if you guys do decide to permit it for this year, it does not necessarily mean that you have to continue it for next season if there are concerns or issues. The applicant has also applied for the appropriate ABC licenses through POSI for expansion of premises permits for each event date. As of right now, those applications are on hold pending the outcome of tonight, so they will, if Council wants to move forward, I will go in and approve those applications. If not, I will go in and deny those. So they have done what they need to do, ABC-wise, to get to this point.
And if I could just make a clarification, so the reason why they're here at council is because they wanted alcohol beyond their property line into the public right-of-way. So you get, so if somebody could ask, well, they operated all season, why are they just now here before council? Well, they never had alcohol into the right-of-way. Their alcohol was always on their premises, they had appropriate ABC license approval to be on premises, they had a special event permit with the city to be, to occupy this city space as part of us closing the roads, and we had internal reviews with police and fire and other administrative processes to make sure that that event operated safely, just like we do every other process. So it was not needing council approval until the request formally came in to have alcohol in the street, and that's why it took so long, was we had a lot of internal review and discussion about, now we're moving alcohol into the public space, how do we control that, how is it going to happen? And that's what took, you know, the application was originally submitted early in the season, and it took that long to go through and get to a point where the city administrative staff was comfortable making a recommendation to council that we could do this safely for the city and our residents and the public, and to help protect the Chalfont to operate a good event. So that's what we have to do. So if somebody's going to do something before, it took us three months to come to this conclusion, not, not taken lightly.
And just to clarify, the request is to only allow the portability and mobility of alcohol on the sidewalks directly adjacent on Howard and Sewell, right, basically where the, where the event is. The closed street portion will not have alcohol in it. That is purely just for event flow for people to watch, so the only place that they are requesting the portability of alcohol is the sidewalk area. The Chalfont is already licensed in their grass area, their, their full property is licensed, so it's just that expanded sidewalk area that is under consideration by council tonight.
I think one of the, one of the matters also that is taken into consideration is the enforceability of this as well. So my understanding, and I know that there are going to be, I anticipate we'll get some remarks as far as how, how the property owner would intend on enforcing that, but, look, first off, it's for a limited period of time, for the remainder of this year. Part of the plan that was presented was to ensure that people who are partaking in this do remain within, within the curb line and don't take alcohol out into the street area. So I think that's a great consideration, and I believe that that was one of, from my standpoint, that the fact that it would just be on the property itself, even up to the curb line, is really a critical factor as far as consideration of this particular application.
And the other thing, because it is such a short timeframe, and it's only a few weeks, weeks, we'll get feedback. We'll know if we, you know, if there's... if it's going to, you know, if they apply for it next year, you know, with the police, with the fire. They've already analyzed it, looked at it, you know, gave us that information, and told us that they felt it was very safe and secure. And, you know, we can always look at it after that.
I think the most important part is the comment that Ms. Burke made, which was basically, this is just... does not roll over till next year.
Doesn't.
This is a limited exercise. It's three hours, one night a week, and we will learn from this in the next month or so. But I do want to assure the public that we... this was given the full consideration and included all of the professionals to make sure that what, you know, was coming forth in this resolution was understood, and the conditions for this event were clear.
The only... the only other issue I guess I have, in addition to the precedent setting, is the copycat potential from other businesses in town. The special permit is generally just that, a special permit. In this case, there's a special permit every week. That's not necessarily what I would call as a special permit, because it's a continuation. I don't know how I can make it more impressive on council that they make sure that this does not become a pattern of allowing alcohol to be served outside, not only on the lawn, but now we're stepping out into public property. And, you know, one of the fights that many of the municipalities in the state have had is the serving of alcohol on the beach. You know, we're opening up Pandora's Box to allow alcohol to be served on a public property, which is a sidewalk. Is the next one a street? And the next one, a beach? I would be highly disappointed if it kind of grows.
Understood, understood. Which is why we're trying to emphasize that this is a one condition situation, and it's not changing current, you know, ordinance or regulations or the requirements that professionals have to review it before it comes to us. This is not us individually saying, you know, yes, we're supporting this. It was in the clerk's office and the city manager's office for months before it came to us.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I just have a couple clarification questions. Because on the city streets, I guess, I think I saw something in the packet with insurance being required?
It's been provided.
Okay. And is Howard Street's not going to be closed, correct?
No.
No, just that one little section?
Yeah, that small portion of Sewell.
Okay. And with the special events permit, is there a limitation for the number of days that somebody can have a special event permit?
For ABC or for the city?
No, for the city.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I just wasn't sure how we worked, and I don't... I couldn't remember if there was one, like saying that a special event permit is not 30 days, or it's not, you know... what is the timeframe for a special event?
Like, as far as a reoccurring special event, you mean? Like, is...
Or anything.
I think the duration, the whole duration.
Right, yeah.
Can it go from January to June, or can it go a full year, or... We've been very... I would think if the applicant made it clear as far as, like, the event dates and the times and the durations on the application, that is what would be under consideration by the manager. Again, it's only going to come to council because of the alcohol thing.
Why I'm saying this, we have limited rental homes to not allow them to have more than two weddings a year, I think it is, in some of their homes, right?
Rental homes, you're not allowed to have... you're not allowed to rent your home out and have weddings at all, technically.
Well, I think there's that, you know, I think that has across from Congress Hall, the yellow one, people rent it out, and they... if they have less than, I think, a certain number of people, they can have their weddings there. But I think it's a whole house rentals with weddings.
That's a whole dicey. There's event house regulations. That's kind of... that's outside of the special event permit.
Well, why wouldn't... would they be allowed to go for a special event permit?
Because that's not on city property.
It's what?
It's not on city property.
City property, okay.
Yeah, yeah, special event, yeah, that's private property.
Okay, so I'm just looking for clarification.
Yeah.
So special events permit is only for people that want to use city property?
Yes.
Thanks.
There you go.
I appreciate that.
You can call it a use of facilities permit as well. We interchange it, so...
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Of course.
There's nothing in there.
So this is the applicant, or the representative for the applicant.
Good evening, council members. Scott Silver from the law firm of Nemad Davis &amp; Goldstein on behalf of King Edward Corp. Just for the record, when an original application was made to allow use of the public property for alcoholic beverage consumption during the ramble events, the initial application asked for everything from the property line to include the entire street out to the far curb. It's a result of the reviews that the council members noted by the professional staff and their determinations that the application, both for the ABC permit and the Cape May city permit, were amended to say, okay, we're going to do this for the first time. We've had alcoholic beverages out to the property line with no problems. Why don't we try going out to the curb line? That will allow additional area for people who want to observe and also have an alcoholic beverage, and it'll give you an opportunity to see what happens over the rest of this season with the anticipation that the applicant probably will come back next year for a similar request. And this is one of the things that makes Cape May special. There have been, as far as I'm aware, no issues with alcoholic beverages going out to the property line. Again, there will be no sales on the city right-of-way. Simply the people won't have to be jammed in if they want to have an alcoholic beverage. They can at least have a little additional room out to the curb. As we've done all along, there will be forced private security guards. There are also two Cape May duty officers, and those individuals and those officers are responsible to ensure that people don't walk out of the designated areas with their beverages. They're looking for any potential pass-offs where someone over 21 gives someone under 21 a drink. They're looking to make sure that everything is conducted properly, that there are no glass containers out there, and that people don't bring their own alcoholic beverages into this area. What people do on the street, although the street is closed and the chalfont pays for it, the chalfont has no control over what may go on on the street, but it will have control over what goes on out to its property line and onto the sidewalk, if this is granted. Representative from King Edward Corp. is here. If you have any questions for him or me, we'd be glad to address them.
I would like to make note, just for the public, that the applicant is also paying for the presence of the police officers. There is no cost to the city incurred by this special event. The applicant is bearing that cost.
Are there any questions from the public at this time to the representatives? No? Counsel? Any questions? Okay, well, we can close public comment, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, are we ready for a vote? Any additional discussion by counsel at this point?
No.
No. We already have a motion and a second. We ready for roll call?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Perfect. Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
All right.
And I just want to add that what, you know, we certainly heard you, and again, when and if this applicant comes before the city next year, or anyone, we will have the professionals review these applications and give us their advice and counsel on how these should be handled on an individual basis. Thank you.
We'll wait for the retrieval of the mayor to move on. He may have gotten coffee.
Do you want to give your announcements?
Sure, I'll go through a couple of mine.
Yeah.
Mine are easy, mine are fun. There is a trick-or-treat... a trick-or-trails cleanup on October 30th from 3:00 to 5:00. Everyone is welcome to help go and clean up the Lafayette Street Park nature trails. I'm hearing there might be a sweet treat involved at the end of that. So the more the merrier. We have the Halloween parade is October 19th at 3:00 PM, and I found out today that they are doing trick-or-treating on the mall again. I don't know if everyone's participating, but I believe some of the mall is participating again. So come on out for that. And then, of course, our trick-or-treat night for the city is October 31st from 5:00 to 8:00. I believe we are intending to close a portion of Washington Street again. I'm not sure which... between which streets yet, but probably same as last year, just for some safety.
Aaron, one more, the Firehouse.
Oh, yes. The 150th anniversary celebration for the Firehouse is also on October 19.
Yes.
I don't have the time right off the top.
11 o'clock.
11.
11 AM. Wonderful. Also, please, please join us for that. It's my wedding anniversary, so I will not be at any of these. Everybody else should go.
Is there a rain date for the parade? Is it the following week?
If we want to continue, I think it is the following week. But if you want to continue, I can confirm that for you.
But it's not going to rain.
But it's not going to rain.
It's not going to rain.
My anniversary.
We paid extra for the bubble.
Yes.
I'll confirm that, though, if we want to go back to any, maybe new business solicitor. Anything for you?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City manager?
I did have one thing. I did distribute to council, and I think I've discussed it with everybody, regarding we received plans for the renovations of the lifeguard station. And I'd like to request authorization to go out to bid for that so that we can try to get this authorized, possibly awarded at the last council meeting in November, so that we can try to get this under construction. Talking to the architect and a couple of potential contractors, that if we stay on this schedule, that we could have this renovation complete for the lifeguards before the start of next season. So I think that's a worthy cause to try to get there, and I'd like to request authorization. If we could do a motion vote this evening, and then we'll follow up with a formal resolution at the next council meeting, that would be appropriate.
I would make the motion.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, counsel? I think, just to say, for anyone who doesn't know, I don't know what the exact percentage is, but the makeup of the locker rooms and the facilities in the beach lifeguard headquarters is probably something like 25 to 75 for male...
I think you're being generous.
Yeah.
I think you're being generous.
And that, when it was made, that kind of reflected the population of guards. At this point, we are close to 50/50 female-to-male guards, and bluntly, the female facilities are...
Not at all.
Not... are very lacking. So most of this project is basically expanding the female portion of the lifeguard headquarters, which obviously we would love to have completed before June of next year, so that would be important. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mulch?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the rain date is October 26th.
Okay.
October 26th for the Halloween parade. Thank you.
Okay, council members, any updates? Councilwoman Baldwin?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. We had a really great weekend with the Columbia students that were here. If you recall, we did that. They're doing a resiliency and historic preservation. They're also looking at communications and policy and funding as well, but they were treated to a wonderful walk in the historic district. There was a Q&amp;A. I'm seeing a few people in the audience. Kevin was there as part of the Q&amp;A, part of our HPC. So there was a really informational, you know, platform for them to ask questions and really glean a lot of what we're considering concerns as far as resiliency and historic And Justine and Danny Magrill, I can't say enough, but they've done a fabulous job, which leads me into that communications part of things, which is one thing that they were concerned with. There's one group of the Columbia students that are concerned with that. And Justine and I talked a little bit about this, as far as getting a community update forum. And I know that you talked about, like, some sort of town hall thing, but I think it might be a good idea if we look at community updates, whether it relates to HPC, with the new initiatives that they... that they're seeing people on Tuesdays, the mission statement, you can go into the Environmental Commission and talk about open space. Just make it an open... people in the city want to know what's going on, and I don't think it all should fall here on council. I think having the other community partners involved, like you have Shade Tree Commission with the Spotted Lanternflies. And we can just do something maybe in the spring and in the fall for the community, and just a couple minutes, and then go into breakout sessions and just inform people. I would love to...
So sort of having a roundtable, but with all of the advisory committees or, you know, the boards present, and just sort of do a 15-minute, and then people can say, oh, the workshop on HPC is over here.
Yes.
And the workshop on Shade Tree is over there. And just having...
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could set it up in Convention Hall and just have people pocketed around.
Yep, very, very easy. I just... I would be willing to head it up.
Yeah.
Yes. So Councilmember Baldwin mentioned it to me briefly. We talked about it. I would like to work with you on that, if I had the opportunity to do that, so...
Great.
So, you know, we'll look at something.
I love when two people volunteer on their own.
There you go.
Perfect. No, I love that idea. That's... I think that's fantastic.
And that's all, mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Bodnar?
Sure.
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Deputy mayor?
No, nothing tonight, thank you.
I just want to welcome again, Lauren. We really are thankful for you joining us and really appreciate your willingness to serve the city. Also, I want to thank everyone who came out for the beach cleanup, which did not include me, unfortunately, I couldn't make it. But I know it was well-attended, and they got a lot of work done, so thank you very much. And just to echo what Lorraine said about the Columbia students, and I just want to thank you for basically hosting, you know, and doing a great job of hosting everybody to the city. They had a really nice time, and I think we're going to see some real benefits out of that program, so thank you. With that, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any and all matters, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Mayor Mulch, how are you?
Good to see you.
You too. My name is Matt Moser. I live at 1351 Delaware in Village Green in a twin. And, I don't know, probably about two or three months ago, attended here and just asked, you know, some questions about being able to add on to the twins that are there. And there were three impediments that were brought forward. First was, I believe, look and feel. The second was parking, and the third was the house foundation. And so different neighbors asked and, you know, said, hey, we'd love to be able to do it. And I said, I'll come back. I'm not kind of sure where we left off, but like, as far as the look and feel, it sounded like everybody agrees, like, in just general conversation, that both sides need to go up, it needs to be an architecturally beautiful reconstruction, lack of a better term, matching, even if you want to call it like Cape May, maybe four or five different designs that are acceptable, that look good. The parking, as I walk around the neighborhood and stuff like that, there are some houses that are being worked on. And one of the things that they've done from the parking perspective is, I don't know if I'm using the right term or not, but I'll call it, they were putting concrete strips in with... which would lessen the amount of water from the permeability place, or actually allow more water to flow into the spot and also increase the amount of parking. and also increase the amount of parking that you're doing. And the last item was the house foundation. Talked to a couple of the builders that were, that are putting homes up there or adding on to the homes, the single one and a double. The single one, they've already gone up top. I imagine it's the same fill that was built upon back years ago that's there. Whether or not they put any pilings in, I don't know, like initially. But like, our builder who added on to the back said he's 100% sure the back would hold going up. The builder that was down the street, he, like, four or five houses down, something like that, he said he believed, but he said he would have to check, right? He said he'd want to make sure before he would say anything. So I guess I'm kind of wondering, how do we get things to go forward if we do? Like, are there any other impediments, other concerns? I mean, I really don't know where to go with it, which is why I'm coming here.
Do you want?
Well, yeah, I can certainly, you know, you are aware I'm the president of the Village Green, and also Mr. Bodnar is also a member of the board. This has been something that that neighborhood has struggled with a long time. And I don't know that everyone's of the same mindset, that they want to see second-story homes in that neighborhood. It was originally designed as a campus setting, specifically designed in the fashion of those homes, the quads, the twins. Most of the single homes are in the R3, so they can go up to the second floor. There's a couple of models that were put in, but they're, the smaller ones, the ones on the corner of Pennsylvania and Trenton, and there's a couple on that block that are two-story ones. I think some of the challenge with this is that it has always been the intention of the city. And I've had that home since 1975, when my parents bought it, that it remained sort of as, you know, that kind of design. So the first thing is, you know, do we want to see that change? Do the people who live there want to see it change? Because now you're putting in second-story homes that are next to, you know, one-floor story homes. Is everyone prepared to be able to have their house match their neighbors, and in lichen fashion? And how long is that good for? You live next to your neighbor now, and it may be fine, but what happens in five years? When someone doesn't want to take on the ownership of a second-story home, et cetera? Or they don't have the money to do it. Parking is an issue, and it's becoming more problematic down there as more of these homes become rentals. So what you're taking out in the front to accommodate parking is you're taking out the grass areas. So now we've got concrete pads on the front of houses, as opposed to something that looks like green space or a tree, or whatever it might be. I'm not the arbiter on this. I'm just giving you some of the background of the conversations. The board, prior to my being on the board, was very opposed to this.
Planning or zoning?
No, I'm talking in the Village Green board, was asked by the planning board to come forth, do a survey. And the survey at that time, now it's been a couple of years, has basically said, no, we like our homes the way they, we are. We don't feel overcrowded. We're not, you know, huge builds, et cetera. So I think this is beyond just, you know, coming and asking the council to consider this. There are 600 homes in that neighborhood. Many people like the accommodations the way they are. So I think it's a little bit more than that, aside from the parking issues, aside from the engineering, and aside for the consideration. Most of these homes are twins. There's quads. What do you do with quads? Four people have to decide that they're going to elevate their house.
Right, right.
Yeah. I mean, you can well imagine what this could look like after a little while.
If I could, if I could add to that for a moment, I would, I would just, just add that, you know, as far as the idea of building second stories onto the homes, it's not consistent with the master plan as far as the layout of Village Green and the twins. But, and as we have all seen in Village Green, there's, it's the latest place where there's, where there are a lot of changes with renovating properties and changing the look of them. And some of them are magnificent. People are doing a fantastic job as far as beautifying their homes and making them, with some very nice renovations. But there actually, there is certainly a tension in Village Green as well with the changes. It's changing from what originally was supposed to have a campus type of look, a consistent type of look, which is how it was originally designed, which it, it has changed. So that's what I'm saying is, the issue that you are raising, I think, is part of a broader conversation regarding Village Green. And I don't know, as you said, there may be some people who are in favor of it. I believe that there are a number of people who, there are people on both sides of that conversation.
I believe so. I believe so. Sure, there would have to be. I mean, just when, when we.
But I think, I think from a, from a planning standpoint, there needs to be, it's not something that we could take up, I believe, by way of, you know, at council table to, to, to address. You know, as well, as I said, there's, there's, there's a lot of concern about development and development in, I'll just say, the right way, in Cape May. And some of that is, you know it by seeing it. And I think there's some concern that that happens in the right way. So I think that there, any conversation regarding changing the look of, of the homes in Village Green, that's part of a, part of a bigger conversation.
Which is why I wanted to come here, was to find out what the next steps are. Because I don't want to step on anybody, lack of a better term, right? So that's why I'm here. It's like, how do we, how do we, right? Like, that's why I'm here.
I think the question is, is whether or not the planning board or zoning board is interested in undertaking an analysis as to whether or not they want to change the zoning ordinance, which currently limits the height of a home in Village Green to 20 feet.
Right, but we, like, as Mr. Bodnar said, we already are outside of that in a number of homes.
No, we're not. That, that was put into place after all of the homes were put, were built. And the ones that are second-story are, that design is outside of the scope. Anything that's a two-story house, you know, there's like, there's one down in Vermont, that's in the R3. So when you see single homes that have gone to the second story, most of those are, single ones are in the R3. They're not in the R4.
No, I'm referring to twins that are up.
They were, unfortunately, they were not, they were done, and they weren't, as far as I am aware, permitted. Much as, you know, there are some other things that people have done in their homes that, you know, just, they did.
Or if they were, it predated the present land use ordinance, that had the 20-foot, the 20-foot.
So how do we go about getting to resolution, either one way or another? It's really what I'm looking to see.
Mr. Moser, I think the truth is, not necessarily through city council, who would ultimately need to approve it.
Right.
But really, our land use boards are who dictate and debate, frankly, their changes that they'd like to make. They really work on those with the solicitor, you know, for the land use board. They have public discussion, the engineer, obviously. And have, and then in the past, of course, have had some spirited discussion on changes. Then that ultimately would end up on city council's desk for a vote at a later time. But the planning board will typically vote to approve or not approve recommendations that they're making to city council.
Okay.
One of the things, too, Mr. Moser, is you'd be running into a master plan issue with this, too. And that's really why probably the, the starting point for this discussion is probably best with the planning board. Because if, if, if we adopted something tonight that said, hey, we want to raise the roof, that would, that would go over to the planning board. By statute, we'd have to send it over to them for the review for consistency. And then they would go through the master plan reexamination report from 2019 and say, you know, is it consistent, is it not? Point to certain things and the way it was reviewed. And it didn't feel this way maybe two years ago, but 2029 is not that far away at this point. And there's going to be another reexamination. And as part of that, I think the city's going to be looking at, it's going to be looking at each zone, and it's an opportunity for stakeholders in the community to voice their, you know, opinions about the merits of going up or staying where we are. And I think that's one of the difficulties with this, is there's not a clear consensus from within in that community as to what the outcome is. And really, if council were to take this up, we'd have two sides of the same coin probably saying, do it, or don't do it, and then.
I'm sure, I'm sure you'd have some of that.
Probably the best, and I think some clear examples of outcomes you don't want to see is like a quad with like one of them all the way up and the rest of the three.
Right.
Like, that's an obvious, like, obvious example of, just an absurd example to a point, like, there's probably some consensus on some of this. But it's really something that, from my standpoint, as a land use practitioner, you probably want to see that come from within, come from the people of Village Green. What do they want to see for their future? What do they want to preserve?
Mr. Moser, that's, that's how this has occurred in the past. We, the, the board has been asked to engage in these conversations with the planning board and have stayed consistent. And members of the community were surveyed, have stayed consistent. So, you know, you get beyond three bedrooms, you're up to two parking spaces. You get up to four bedrooms, you're up to three parking spaces. Most of those lots are 5,000 or, or at best, 6,500 square feet. You, and so therefore, you're now taking up every green space because you are required to accommodate parking on those lots with 5,000 square feet. It's almost, you know, impossible. So I understand why, you know, you may want it from a, from an accommodation standpoint for a family reason, but it has impact on a community. And there are many people who have lived down there, my being one of them, for a great number of years. And I like living there for the reason that it's quiet, that we don't have this overcongestion of rentals that are large and, you know, become an overwhelming process for the neighborhood. You also know the demographics, you know, you understand that. That's, people like living there for that reason.
Oh, I do. And we also have a lot of new people who've bought into that area as well.
Specifically because Village Green is a gem. Nobody's allowed to know that, but it is.
Right, right, right.
And so I'm passionate about it, because I want to see us maintain that in a time when, if you're going to make decisions about planning changes or ordinance changes, it needs to be smart. And not just saying, let's allow people to go up. You need to make smart decisions that impacts an entire community. It's just not one home.
So agree, but that was the reason why I came here, to say, what's the starting point that I need to follow?
Is to go to, to.
Is to go, it sounds like it needs to go.
Planning and zoning to make the decisions on this. And it's master plan. And as Mr. Gillenshaw has said, that's, we'll start the work on that in 2027. And believe me, we are still looking at, at master plan issues specific to the R4. You can look at the last planning board meeting. We are still going through the master plan from 2019, specific to the R4.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moser.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else this evening?
Peter Cole, 1075 Michigan Avenue, president of the TPA. Good evening.
Good evening.
The TPA recently received a copy of correspondence between businessman, business owner, Mr. Paul Johnston, with comments from Mr. Johnson, and a letter he received from Councilman Meyer. The TPA does not deal with individual personal matters. But I believe council was also copied in on the correspondence. Can you say that you were? You were. Well, I'll pass this back to you to decide what, if anything, to do about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia. I'm just following up on some presentations that were done on the Jacob Jones, I guess about a month or so ago, and that the committee was going to go and talk about a new location or the same location and size. And I know that some council members are on that committee. I want to know if there's been any progress made or any changes to anything with the Jacob Jones.
They, they have not reached back out to the city to have any further discussions about location or size or scope of that project.
So as of right now, the Jacob Jones is still slated for the Poverty Beach area, is that correct?
No, no, that's not what I said. I said, they haven't come back to the city with any revised location. They're still internally looking at what they want to do.
Well, we left that meeting with the fact that they were going to keep it down at Poverty Beach, but change it to maybe put it on the boardwalk area.
I, I think I had made the statement that Poverty Beach location was not up, and that we took that off the website to acknowledge that, that Poverty Beach was not a location, so.
Well, there's still stuff on the website about the Jacob Jones, just so you're aware.
Yes, but not, there's no, not about the location, and they have not come back to the city. At least not to myself, and I don't think.
There's no proposal right now. There's no proposal. The last meeting that we had, where they, where it was discussed as far as a location or the design of a memorial, there's nothing before city council to consider. And we haven't heard anything since then.
Okay. So I just know that some of these councils, some of the council members here are on the committee. That's why I was reaching out, to see if there's anything new. My next question has to do with the lifeguard renovations. Is that, those plans are on the city website?
The, there were some preliminary sketch plans on there. Now that council has authorized that to go out the bid, I'll put a more formal set of plans up on the.
Okay, yeah, because I thought, before it goes out to bid, that should be made public, the plans, so that there could be some kind of comment from the public in referencing the plans.
Well, they are, what you see on the, I, I think the, the details that are now on architectural plans aren't of any significant change that what's shown schematically on the plan. So there's generally sufficient information on the city's website for anyone from the public to have made comments about that project.
Okay, well, I'm only asking, Paul, so don't bite my head off here.
Well, I'm just explaining.
But I'm asking, because we went, you're asking to go out for bid, and I just didn't know if there was any changes, because I don't know there's any changes to height or anything, so it's just basically the same.
There are no changes to height, no changes.
That's what I want to know.
The schematic of those plans are generally the same.
Okay, thank you.
Jules Rouse, 1010, just two quick items. I had an incident with a, with an EV, electric bicycle. And I'm very happy it didn't happen. We're seeing more and more communities adopting ordinances dealing with electric bicycles, scooters, requiring helmets. Has there any, been any discussion about us doing that? Because the amount of, of bicycles and electric vehicles in the town this year has been astounding. But my question is, what, how are we going to do?
Mrs. Rouse, we did, we did introduce one ordinance. I don't think we've had a second reading yet.
It was a resolution urging the governor to consider regulations similar to what other towns have been passing.
And that addresses helmets and, this is really covered by the state. And I wish there's more that we could do and other municipalities. But what we highlighted in that resolution and letter to the governor was really the importance of license plates. Because if somebody goes by you speeding by, and you don't have something to identify that, then there's nothing the police can do. You know, you, you'd like to think that there is, but they, they need at least a partial license plate to go off of and try to find out who, who it was. We all know that mopeds are required to have license plates. Most people kind of consider this very similar to a moped. So we, we have made a strong message to the governor and to the state legislator that we feel that it really needs to tighten this down. The thing is, that for a lot of people, these have become bicycles. The bicycles are e-bikes and vice versa. So the prevalence of them is, is huge. But like I said, I, we even had a couple thefts this summer that were done on an e-bike. So you know that.
Doesn't surprise me.
We have ways to view who's coming on and off the island. But we don't, if we don't have a license plate to go off of, then we really don't have a lot to go off of. So I, I think it's a major problem, not just, the obvious issue of safety, but also obviously police work and making sure we're monitoring, you know, actions that are, that occur. It's, it's difficult. But, but again, I think it, it really needs to be state legislation.
The only thing, Jules, we did a couple of years ago, I don't know if you recall this, but we made sure that on the boardwalk or on the promenade, that they couldn't be under power. And we put that in a, in a resolution. But that's the only thing.
As we all know, there's, there's an enforcement issue dealing with, with all of these items. And I don't know whether it's just me or my kind of attention to the traffic, but I believe this year. this year, this season was considerably higher in issues dealing with our ability to move around comfortably in town.
It's not just you. It's not just you. I agree with you. I agree with you. It's a problem. It's become a significant problem.
And it's not one easily solved by adopting the strongest worded ordinance for the city of Cape May. I see those things zip past my office every day. I have to look both left and right before I go check my mailbox, because there's just a string of them coming in and out of town. And that's why a state solution is really necessary. And I agree with council and the rest of the municipalities calling for that, because otherwise, it's not going to make a difference, practically speaking, to the people that are just zipping in and out of town. That's why it needs to be a statewide solution. And there's definitely some options out there, but the legislature needs to do something.
Well, the other increase in our population this season, in my view, is we've seen many more properties go into their rental market. And we are increasing the numbers of people that are coming on weekends along with cars. And I'm wondering whether council might pass down to the planning board to suggest that they might think about the number of cars that are permitted to be with a particular rental and have some form of requirements to see if we can cut back on the number of vehicles not only coming into town, but occupying the spaces that you mentioned. The only other item is, we got a nice big parking lot that's being readily used at Lafayette Street Park. And is that, will that continue to be free? Or...
Until...
I don't object to it. You must understand me. It's just, I see, you know, when you see 100 vehicles in there on the weekend, that's a lot of money that maybe could come to the city. Frankly, I know it's needed. The parking area is certainly needed. And when we start construction on the police station, that issue's going to become greater.
It's a discussion. Just one personal opinion, I do love that we have some, not municipal or city employees, but employees of restaurants and things like that that can park there for free. And I'd like to see that to continue. Because we really don't want them taking up a metered space anyway. I mean, that metered space is going to get filled. We know that. I'd much rather see our workers...
Well, parking meters were designed to be used to control and have a turnover of vehicles.
Yes. For our guests, who we'd like to be able to find a parking space, you know. So, personally, I'd like to see the workers still park for free in that area, because they're willing to walk to work. But...
Do we have any liability issues?
There's always liability issues, Mr. Roush, but we can deal with them.
I don't doubt that we can deal with them. It's a matter of whether you're dealing with them successfully or not.
We've been successful so far.
Pardon me?
Don't knock it.
Just as an aside, my father was the first parking meter salesman in the United States. I grew up knowing a little bit about parking meters.
So, you have a conflict in this one, Mr. Roush?
Yeah, you're trying to sell them.
I'm sorry, I forgot to one comment. Stacy, 928 Columbia. The low income or low, what do we call it, house on Lafayette Street, where are we at with that? Has it been rented? What do we call it?
Yeah, I get updates every couple of weeks. Actually, it's on my list. We rented the two-bedroom. The three-bedroom had applicants. They were going through the income process. I need to check back in with Triad. I've been, you know, talking with Susan from Triad as well as Mike pretty routinely. It's a very drawn-out process. You know, first you have applicants, then you identify, then you get income, and then, you know, there is a process. So, roughly, just to give you numbers, on each side of those units, there was probably about 450 applicants for the one-two bedroom.
Clarify, that's not the city. This is...
Oh, not the city. You're just talking about the property on Lafayette that was a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's not a city process.
Oh, did I say that?
No, no. I just, I don't want people to think that the city is like sitting on these applicants or something.
No, I'm not sitting on any applicants. And I apologize if I confused anything. I just had a personal interest.
I know. I think we were both on that.
Yeah, which was why I was following. Yeah. Last I checked, they were still doing their work.
I guess one question I have is, I thought, I can't remember his name, he was going to be responsible for the upkeep on the outside of that house.
Mr. Dean Anato.
Yes.
I couldn't speak to that part.
Okay. Do you remember, he's supposed to be responsible for the upkeep on the outside?
He's still responsible for the property. He's the owner.
Okay, because I had...
I mean, he's an LLC owner.
Yeah, somebody came to me and said, hey, that property, you know, is not being kept up. And that's why I got set up to make a comment about that.
Maybe a quick call to code enforcement, and code enforcement would be able to take care of, help that.
Okay. Thank you.
Roz Johnson, 826 Lafayette Street. Really quick, about the e-bike situation. I, living on Lafayette Street, I hold my breath seeing them speed by in the scooters. But I think you have to realize that a high percentage of people that are using these e-bikes are employees that are trying to get to their jobs. The bus schedule does not fit everyone. There is no parking for them. So, how do they get to their jobs? They have found a way. And I just hope you realize that, I'm sure you do, that a high percentage of the e-bikes are employees. I work with a gentleman. He used to take a bus. But he said that, you know, the bus just wasn't dependable enough for him to get to work. And so, he purchased an e-bike. And I think that's the situation that a lot of the people that work in Cape May are finding. And I also hope that we always think about the employees that do work in Cape May, because they are the people that make Cape May keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz. What's that?
Glenn Hall, 409 Jefferson Street. Question about code enforcement. We passed the code tonight, talking about tear down through neglect. I'm not sure exactly how we enforce that or prevent that from happening, because we already have a code on the books about historical homes and maintenance and cleanliness and all that, which you can walk around town is not very well enforced, in my opinion. So, how do we enforce these types of codes?
Mr. Slusser, do you want to answer that? Yeah, the code that was adopted tonight provides a very clear pathway for code enforcement and for applicants to navigate this process. Right now, we don't really have like a built-in process, other than you might get a letter from code enforcement. But this provides a number of tools to the city for a property in the historic district that may be deteriorating. And it could be a portion of that structure. And we have all these property surveys. I'll just give you, like, to illustrate an example, the historic property survey may say, you know, this front porch is really a contributing component of the structure. That's a key component. We don't want that to fall apart. And then, years go by, it might be in an estate, or there might be some issues with whoever's maintaining that property, not keeping up with it. You could see the porch kind of deteriorating to the point of, this looks like it's about to fall over. And, you know, the code enforcement officer doesn't need to run like some schematic test to come to the conclusion that there's probable cause that there might be a problem here. But probable cause of, you know, a deteriorating condition would be enough to send a notice to the owner and saying, you know, we view this as a, this is an estate of neglect. If you dispute this, you have a right to a hearing. You can go to the HPC and be heard by the HPC. And the code enforcement officer will be there and say, hey, this is what we observed. And then, they can show up and say, it's not deteriorating. I went there last week, you know, and I got a coat of paint. It's all on the back of the truck. I just, you know, like, that discussion can happen. Or, if they sit on it and then do nothing after 30 days, it's determined to be an estate of neglect. The city could actually take some affirmative action, just like it could go fix a sidewalk. It could go maybe do some limited work, if it chooses, to reinforce that so it doesn't fall apart. And that becomes not a tax on the city, but it could be assessed to the property owner, just like a sidewalk repair or something like that could be. Or, and/or, you could send a municipal court summons to get that process started. So, there's multiple methods and tools for a code enforcement officer. I wouldn't say that we don't have any options right now without this code, but this is, provides a much clearer pathway and much clearer toolbox for the code enforcement officer to point to and for applicants to know that, look, if I don't keep up on this type of thing, this is what I'm looking at.
I've only lived here about 10 years, so I'm still catching up. But in my entire time here, 30 Congress Street has looked like a rundown, dilapidated, abandoned property. I know it's not, because I see people there occasionally. But the property itself is an embarrassment to our town, I would think. It is to me. And so, but I haven't seen any change. So, I don't know if this ordinance is different than the one that's already on the books for maintaining this store property, and how that will be enforced or will apply the same enforcement process that you've just described against existing code that we have.
Yeah.
That could kind of alleviate that kind of issue.
And I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the existing code is more geared towards, if somebody has a reason to interact with City Hall, like, they're going to, now we're going to make a change to the building. So, now we got to go to the HPC. And now we have a discussion about what the condition of the property is in. This is more proactive on the part of, people may observe a condition that is concerning, that this is maybe an estate of deterioration. That can be a referral to code enforcement officer. But ultimately, this is not geared towards just like torturing people. It's geared towards compliance. So, what it does is, it gives the code enforcement officer a reason to bring those people, call them in, have a conversation with code enforcement and maybe the HPC about bringing the property into compliance. So, this, like I said, there may be some other existing tools and resources, but this is a much clearer, cleaner way of, package of dealing with this problem.
Okay. Hope it works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hi, Dennis.
Hi, Dennis Crowley, 806 Lafayette Street. I want to revisit the discussion on Lafayette Street Park for a minute or two. And I think we've grown accustomed, it's almost like dealing with a sort of an ailment, that we've all been accustomed to living with the fact that this park has been delayed time and time again for a whole variety of reasons and a litany of excuses for why it isn't getting done. The park was designed, the current design we have is in phases. Two or three of those phases are done. The middle phase is, as I look at the plans, surface installations of pickleball courts, basketball courts, and tennis courts. And then, the last of the species is a parking lot, which is going to be next to the new police station. Now, my question is, and we heard a comment earlier about getting ready for the lifeguard headquarters to be ready for Memorial Day. And the question I have for you is, is the park going to be ready by Memorial Day? Because if it isn't, we have escalated the problem that we have. And that is that we're using the section of the, phase of the park, which is supposed to be the surface level athletic installations, we're using it as a pop-up free parking lot. There's a problem, I have a problem with that concept for two reasons. Number one, at any given day during the summertime, you have 100 or more, perhaps even as high as 200 cars, using that facility, which we all know is an environmentally sensitive piece of land to begin with. It's not paved, it's not organized in any way as a parking lot. It's just simply there that people come and go off of Lafayette Street. So, if we do that again next summer, we're going to have two, what I would think would negative consequences. Number one, we have, we're going to be accustoming the visitors to this town, that there's a free parking lot on Lafayette Street. And let's use that. The second is, we have once again, for yet another year, deprived the residents and the taxpayers of this town, the facilities that we promised them. It's their park. If you drive through Sea Isle, you drive through Avalon, you drive through Stone Harbor, you get recreation park envy. Because those towns have beautiful facilities that have been put up and used very well by the, they don't have many residents in those towns, but we do. And, but they have a lot of visitors and they use them too. Those are facilities that we promised everybody that was going to be an integral part of a Cape May visit. It's not, if it doesn't happen this year, it's going to make it worse. These are false, we're entering a term of false promises. If it doesn't get done, we have eight months between now and Memorial Day, when we want to target the new facilities for the lifeguards. We have eight months to complete the land installations of the athletic complexes of those courts, basketball, tennis, and pickleball. And then, the original entrance to the park, which has a fountain in it. And I'm not sure I know why we can't do that in eight months. Because we're not going to let, we're not going to be able to get the parking lot built. That's going to be used to facilitate the heavy equipment building the police station. That's off the table. But I'm not sure why we can't just get in there and finish that middle section of the park, get it ready for Memorial Day, and tell the people who come to this town, that's the new park. Doesn't it look great? Why don't you use it as well as you use the nature trail? And if you're looking, if you're looking at using it as, once again, a pop-up free parking facility, you're going to run into two problems. You're going to have to look at whether or not that's even legal, based on our legal history connected with the environmental condition of that site. And number two, and Jules raised the point a minute ago, you're basically depriving the city of revenue, which they need, which we need to help fund a real parking solution, which the planning board has a subcommittee put together to study whether or not we can even do that. But the point is, it's almost like a slapdash approach to two real problems. Number one, parking's a problem. Number two, the residents of this town seem to be disheartened that we'll ever have a park. And so, I'd like the council to give me a commitment that will have the surface installations of the courts in the middle of that park up and ready for Memorial Day. And if you can't do that, if you can't do that, we're going to have to know why. And secondly, you're going to have to come up with a better plan for the use of that free parking space, because we have environmental concerns. And these state agencies have been up our butts about this thing to begin with. We need to have a better plan for not only the, whether or not we can use that.
Mayor.
But how can we recoup the revenue from it? And thirdly, how is it organized? Because there is no organization in that lot now. You could even put up one of our park mobile signs, if you want to, and send some, and send some folks in there. That would be an easy solution. But the point is, you either tell us you're going to have our park for our use by Memorial Day, or you're going to tell us why. And then, you're going to tell us how you're going to manage that parking lot, because it isn't very well managed now. Thank you.
So, look, I've been very open about my own disappointment with the progress of Lafayette Street Park. And it's been over a decade, if not longer. And of course, it started with the remodeling of the playground that exists today. We did, just this year, add ADA surfacing to the playground, which was important, because it didn't meet handicap accessibility. Kids were getting hurt. We weren't keeping the appropriate amount of mulch and things like that. But so, and an expensive endeavor that we did 50/50 with the elementary school and the Board of Education and the city of Cape May. Obviously, Dennis, you know that they're working on a second phase of the park, whatever phase it is, another phase of the park, right now, Phase X. And that is, actually, my understanding is going to get sod next week. The irrigation has been completed. They're looking at opening up the bocce ball court soon. So, I'm saying soon, because I'm not positive. But I would say, within the next 30 days, you're going to see a big improvement in that area, a nice grassy area for ball playing, et cetera. The, go ahead.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. I agree with you. Everything is, it was a little bit of a glitch, because we had that problem. All that stuff is in the past. It's going to get done as soon as possible. My concern is, if we don't do something about the court situation, the athletic courts, if we don't do something about that within the next eight months, we're going to have another summer with two things. we're going to have another summer with two things. The, the pop-up parking, which, which may not even be legal. And then we're going to have, once again, no more park for our residents and our taxpayers for yet another year. And that, and that's something that, that seems to me, I don't, I don't know how many people even care about that, but I care about it because I've been listening to the same dialogue that you have for the last 10 years. And I was on that original committee many years ago that designed that park. So, so what I'm saying is, let's start the clock now. It's eight, eight months.
Can I, I want to answer your question.
Okay.
And I want, I want other people to hear it too. We unfortunately had to really break this thing apart, which is, to be honest with you, our solicitor did a really good job and I'm not, it's hard to pat anyone on the back for Lafayette Street Park, believe me. But it was literally a bowl of spaghetti that we had to individually unwind. And this list included the DEP, the EPA, the New Jersey DEP, the Historic Preservation Commission, the State Historic Preservation Commission, the Board of Education. It included housing, HUD, Housing and Urban Development, JCPL. Keep, keep going, help me. Cape May County. I, I mean, I'm telling you, the amount of people that were involved in this was incredible. And, and, and every single person took forever to get through the regulation and red tape. And it is ridiculous. I, I'm not going to defend it. It was absurd. And I, we went to Trenton and talked with the governor and met with the head of the DEP. And so, bottom line, getting through all of that took a very long time. And now we still are waiting for a CAFRA permit. So we, we need to get a CAFRA permit because those hard courts are near the wetlands. So anything hard surface, we have to get the CAFRA permit. The other thing that happened during this entire thing is some of the grants that we had expired. So now we don't want to build something without grants that we know we can get. So unfortunately, we're waiting for some of the last bits of red tape to be complete so that we can get some of those grants back, which we know we can. And that's going to pay for probably at least 70% of the rest of this park. And that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, so when we can get the grants, if we can get the grants, will we still have time to build the courts?
No, I think, I think the goal is, and it's a very legitimate goal, that we start this project by this time next year. And that's the completion of the park.
No, it's not. We still won't have the parking lot built because we're using it for the police station.
The park itself, I'm talking hard courts and, and everything would, and, and maybe the parking lot would start. I don't, I mean, we've got to work out how that's going to be a detail with the police station construction going on and whether we even want to have a parking lot that might get beat up during that process, okay? But every other aspect of the park, I do believe we would be able to start in the fall, the, the fall of 2016.
So next summer, we're going to be looking at yet another scenario, same as last year, same as this year?
No, no, because we'll have the new dog park. We'll have the, the new soccer field, all brand-new sod. All, all of that area, frankly, in front of your house will be green sod, hopefully irrigation.
Okay, so it's going to be a parking lot then, you're saying?
Most likely.
So let me remind you that free parking in Cape May is almost like heroin. Once you get addicted to it, you're going to have a hard time getting off of it. And the, the further number of years we use that or misuse that piece of property based on its original intent, the harder it's going to be to explain why we let it go so long.
I hear you. I, I, believe me, I hear you. And look, there's going to be issues that we have to address. We can't have RVs parked there and stay there. I mean, you know, so there's, there's going to be probably a, a real reason that we're going to have to put at least some of the parking spaces metered or whatever. I mean, what, so it's, it's going to be a discussion that we have to tackle.
That was my third point. If you're going to have it, it's got to be better organized.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no comment, we'll, motion to adjourn? All right. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you.
Time is 6:52.